I now invite Matilda Ferguson and Lola Penny, from U Climate Strike, to address our meeting please.
Hello, I'm Matilda and this is Lola. And we're a part of U Strike Climate in Liverpool. The most common question that we get asked is why are you striking? To me and so many others, the answer seems so obvious. I strike for my future. For the future of the human population, the future of all animal and plant species, and for the futures of all of the children that deserve a much better world than the one that they've inherited. You think a climate breakdown is being something far off that won't affect you, something you won't have to worry about for years. But stop and think about this. The future starts right now. And I know it sounds cheesy, but it's true. The future's starting in this moment. Not in ten minutes, or two months, or eleven years. Ecological breakdown and large-scale extinction of species and loss of wildlife is already happening. With as many as 2,000 species being lost a year, and extinction rates being 10,000 times higher than normal, meaning 50% of all species will face extinction by the end of the century. And thanks to ever-growing amounts of carbon being released and trapped in our atmosphere, our planet is slowly baking, melting ice and causing fatal, crucial flooding. Excess carbon trapped in our oceans is causing acidification, is changing marine biochemistry, and poisoning what little marine life, wildlife, has not already been treated to death, are 236,000 metric tonnes of plastics in the ocean. Tropical storms become more intense due to rising sea temperatures, causing more destruction than ever. Increasing numbers of people will be displaced and amounts of climate refugees will increase exponentially. Reaching 150 million are expected to be forced to flee their homes by 2050. And this is just the start of the list of things that will not only be worse in the future, but that are happening right now. The college dictionary defines a crisis as a situation in which something or someone is affected by one or more very serious problems. All of these events, these situations, you're saying are serious problems? So you can agree at certain correct state that this is a crisis? How do people respond in time to the crisis? They react to the actions were done or arranged quickly with a sense of urgency and importance? Because an unexpected, difficult, or dangerous situation has occurred and quick action is required to deal with it. Funnily enough, this description is identical to that of the definition of an emergency. So, this is a crisis and an emergency. And yet still, not enough has been done. It's not enough to declare a climate emergency simply to satisfy your children and then not take action. It is not enough to make large plans for a far-off future when our present looks so bad and it's inadmissible to ignore the facts that stare us in the face.
For the last 200,000 years, humans as we knew them have existed on planet Earth, and it has provided for us. What we are starting to forget is in the grand scale, it will be a small blink of an eye in the Earth's 4.5 billion-year history when we too become extinct. It is very clear that the Earth will survive without us. It didn't fall and will again. But we rely on the Earth just to stay us, and we have never got options except to try our very best to undo, or at least slow down the damage we have caused. Please make the note of the pronoun 'we', that's us, accepting responsibility as members of a capitalist and consumer society, demanding everything in excess with no regard to the destruction we are causing. The crisis cannot be blamed on individuals. It is the responsibility of the big coal, gas, and oil companies to stop acting in order to produce a profit and start acting with a future in mind, prioritising preserving the planet. It is the responsibility of our governments to enforce policies and guidelines in order to prevent us using air to buy abundant finite resources and to start time and effort into implementing new and sustainable measures of power. We are doing our parts, recycling, going plastic-free, or adopting a vegan lifestyle. It is time for our leaders to be theirs. Action is no longer a choice, it is an obligation. Okay, so to finish, I'm going to use a metaphor you may have heard before. Imagine a bathtub. Both taps are on and the water is flowing fast. It has been scientifically proven that unless you turn off both taps before the water reaches the brim in 11 minutes, you'll battle flood. So what do you do? You're not going to wait until the inevitable destruction of your new battling tiles and then figure out a way to mop up the damage. You would do the logical and obvious thing. Do something while you still have time. Turn off the tap before it's too late. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I would like now to invite Lord Devon to speak. To counsel, the Right Honourable John Gummett, Lord Devon, was Minister for Agriculture, Fisheries and Food between 1989 and 1993, and the longest-serving Secretary of State for the Environment the UK has ever had. Lord Devon is Chair of the Independent Committee on Climate Change, established under the Climate Change Act of 2000 date, and provides official advice to the government and Parliament about emissions, greenhouse gases, and preparing for climate change. We are very grateful for his willingness to travel and take part in this important debate here in Liverpool, and it's always a pleasure to welcome such esteemed and authoritative figures to address our council, Lord Devon. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to remind you that by the time those two young people of my age, this world will either be inhabitable, uninhabitable, or habitable. That's the period of time that we have. And we've got to understand the reality of the urgency of what we have to do. So when the government asked the question, which was, could they meet the Paris Agreement to which they had signed up? How soon could they meet it? And at what cost will they meet it? They were asking a brave question, because when you're asked a question, you tend to get an answer. And we gave them the answer, and it is a very carefully written answer, because we were determined to bring as many people together as we could do within the urgency that we had. So the answer was based, first of all, on the technology that we had. We didn't say, well, we hope we're going to invent this, or there might be that type. We said, we've got to have the worst possible scenario, so you start with the technology that you've got. The second thing we said was, we're not going to count in any of the incongruent advantages to health and the rest by doing this. We're not going to add them to the advantages and therefore making the cost less because of it. And the third thing we said was that we're not automatically going to count the fact that we will be able to do things more cheaply, because we discovered that, as we know, when we created a market for offshore wind, so the government has to create the market, private enterprise then went into the market, we found that the price of offshore wind dropped dramatically. It is that partnership, you can't do it without regulation. All those free marketers who think you can do it without actual government intervention are wrong. But those who think it's only government intervention are also wrong, because you've got to use every possible part of society to achieve this end. And so when we came up with the answer, I want everyone to understand that it is very tough. I know the Extinction Rebellion and the wonderful example of Gavin Deacon have made me look less of an eco freak and more of a moderate, but that's been very hard. But the truth of the matter is, it's very tough. And more important than that, we have to do it now. We can't possibly leave it. Every year that goes by makes it much more difficult. But we do know that in our back pocket is that if we do get started on it now, we may be able to do it earlier than 2050. If we get started on it now, we may be able to do it cheaper than between 1%, 2% of the gross national product. And if we get started on it now, we will be driving all sorts of organisations to produce technology which will make it easier, cheaper, and more effective. But the key things, which is why I thought it really worthwhile to come to Liverpool, a city which I love, a city which I have a good deal about, where I work at the moment, if I dare say, working for Everton Football Club. So those who don't like Everton, let us shut up. But the fact of the matter is, I'm thrilled to be here, because what we are doing today is really important. Because however much we advise government, however much we provide proof the government isn't doing what it ought to do, however much we may find ourselves taken into court as, not against us, but as witnesses for the prosecution if the government doesn't do what it is now statutorily required to do. Because that's what this means. What the government has done is put its own head into the limousine, it has said that this is the statutory requirement to get to net zero by 2050. And of course, once it's passed that, it can't change. The really remarkable thing about the Climate Change Act, which if you remember was an all-party act, it was invented by the Conservatives, joined in by the Liberals, and the Nationalists, even the Protestant Unionist Party from the Northern Ireland, and then the Labour Government took it on, so that it was universally supported, and there were only eight people voting against it. So it is a really genuinely post-party act. Beauty of that act is that once Parliament has passed the targets, it can't change them without the permission of the Climate Change Committee. We're eight or nine scientists and economists, and I'm the only non-scientist or economist I'm supposed to keep them together, which they do, more or less, they behave themselves extraordinarily well. But here we are. So we've got this very clear aim. So why Liverpool? The truth is, it won't be done centrally. It can only be done if every locality takes its part. These things are done street by street, house by house. These things are done local organisations, by local companies, by the way that people locally make their decisions. There is no way of doing this centrally. And already cities like Leeds, for example, have set up a climate change permission, which advises the Leeds Civic Council, just as we advise the government. Already that's been followed by work in Birmingham and in Belfast, that's not Leeds, Belfast and in Edinburgh, and we're following along with that with what's happening in Bristol and Cambridge, and I hope soon to be Reading and Norwich. And Liverpool's independent decision to do this is really important for all of us. Because if you don't do it, other people won't do it. And I want really to press that. One of the problems when you're debating this in the House of Commons or the House of Lords is that some clever guy always gets up and says, we're only 2% or 1% of the world's emissions. Why on earth shouldn't we let other people start? And then we follow on. The reason is that if you don't do it yourself, you can't ask other people to do it. That's the first thing. The second thing, that most of the climate change that is happening today, we caused, because it was our leadership in the Industrial Revolution that has caused that remarkable effect. We didn't know, so we can't be blamed for it, but now we do know, we are responsible for it. And after all, we grew rich because of it. These beautiful buildings in Liverpool are the result of the remarkable prosperity which the Industrial Revolution brought to all of us. So we have to do it, not just to get other people to do it, but because we are genuinely responsible, and we dare not therefore step down from that. And so far, so far, Britain has done better than other countries. Now we've got to turn the good words into practice. And I want to leave you, because I know you're going on to this thousand and seventeen seconds, I want to leave you with just some very simple things. Why is it that we're building crack houses? Every single house we build today is not at the level it ought to be in order to combat climate change. We're building houses where we actually make everybody who buys one pay a cost every month in the extra bill they get for their heating. We built them properly, they have much smaller bills, we'd be able to reach out to the tourists because they're the ones who are most affected and will be most affected by climate change. Secondly, why on earth don't we have a situation in which Liverpool City Council, Liverpool Council, the whole of government procurement, only procured on the basis of working with people who are fighting climate change? Why don't we use the power that we've got to make those choices? Thirdly, why don't we very simply insist in the future that we start to reach the target of all-electric vehicles by 2030, or 2035 at the latest? 2040 is far too late, and we have to tell this to brain in the back of the back, it has to come back. Fourthly, why don't we actually say to ourselves, everything we do, we ought to have the question, how do we make this better as far as climate change is concerned? How do we constantly ask that question? And then lastly, how do we recognise that climate change, and in this I'm quoting the paper, because it seems to me that is inside the, as I can see, is the most important insight of all. Climate change is the symptom of what we've done to the world. We're not just talking about climate change, we're talking about by the way in which we have destroyed species of this world. So well remarked by two young people who spoke. It's about poverty in the world. It's about the way we misuse the land. It's by the way we haven't planted the trees. It's the way we have treated our people. All those things are what we've done to the planet, which is our only planet and upon which we depend for our, all that is true. And therefore, in fighting climate change, we are actually doing a much wider job than that. And we're beginning to learn again to live as we ought to live, as human beings in harmony with nature, instead of raping and pillaging, which is what we have done for so many generations. And we are all in this together, not only in the solution, but also in the causes. I never want to get one political party crowing over another. I never want businesses to crow over the fact that they've done better than others have. I never want trades unions to think that they're doing it better than businesses. We have all got it wrong, and we have all got to put it right. And the fact that I believe that Liverpool is determined to do that makes the possibility of coming here and doing my best to help you do it really exciting and valuable. Thank you for the opportunity, and every power to your elders.
Thank you, Lord Devon, and a safe journey back to London. Now can I invite Mayor Anderson and we to introduce the council debate on the climate change motion? Thank you.
Well, Mayor, I don't think we're going to get many contributions to like this parliament of one year from our young students early on, but I do want to make some contributions to it, because quite frankly, for me, the fact that central governments have agreed that we have a climate emergency is probably the most significant step of advancement that we've had in this particular area in my lifetime. And so I'm delighted that we gathered here tonight to discuss what I think is the biggest challenge and biggest issue that's facing the city, the country, and indeed the planet. And there are, of course, many, many challenges, serious challenges that will face us, but what it does require is serious responses from us as a council. I think there are real opportunities for us to, if we seize them, where we can make a difference not only to our own residents, but to our city, but to also to future generations. And again, for me, the challenges I'm talking about, John Gummet talked about, about the climate deniers, those that actually believe that doesn't exist, or it's not caused by climate change or a climate emergency. And it's important that we understand and recognise that. But equally important that we recognise that we have to set an example. Because in December in 2015, there were 197 countries that signed up and reached an agreement to limit global temperatures to an increase beyond 2 degrees Celsius this sensitive. And yet, there is only seven countries so far that have actually signed up to that. And that includes countries that don't need to do anything because they are climate neutral. And that is a real serious issue for us, but also for the government. What I want to say and pay tribute to the leaders of the political groups that joined me in having a discussion and a debate about this motion, because I think quite frankly, we've laid on this issue of political differences to one side, for what I believe is the best interests and the good of our city. And it is set out in that motion, and explained in that motion, the journey that we all together must make. Because as rightly said by our students, climate change is not something that's a threat to our children, or our children's children. It is happening right now. It's here, it's now, it's in front of us, and we must do all we can, as a city, but also as individuals, as families, as communities, as organisations, as businesses, working together to actually do something about it. And of course, we don't have to go too far back to look in history how together we can make a difference. We only have to look at the 60s, the 50s, the 60s, and the smog that caused, caused really the militation in terms of the industrial industries that caused smog and respiratory problems for the poorest, not just in Liverpool, but in Manchester, Leeds, and in the big cities across the country. And we introduced in the 60s the Clean Air Act. So it shows that with real joy about thinking and a commitment, that you can start to do something about it. Of course, we only have to look at the river, the River Mersey, and the pollution of the River Mersey. And isn't it ironic, of course, that as we have cleaned up the Mersey over the last 20 years, with a clean-up programme, we're seeing fish return to the river, salmon, we also see other wildlife here within the River Mersey. And yet, just recently, it's been exposed by a green piece that the challenges that we face are microplastics being dumped into the River Mersey, making us one of the most polluted again, after all the work that we've done over the last 20 years. And that's a distraction, that businesses in the city, in the city region are dumping that into our rivers, and we've got to make sure that not only do we test the fire, but we can use the full powers to actually punish them and find them, and find them out of existence if that is the case that they've been doing that. But we also need to work on action on energy, on transport, on housing, on biodiversity. And tonight, you know, you've heard already, it's being announced that we have a dedicated cabinet member for climate change. Councilor Robertson Collins will be responsible for coordinating our response to this massive and important issue for us. But I just also think it's important that we recognise that we're not starting from zero as a city on this. Two years ago, I laid out a vision to prioritise walk and cycling and electric vehicles and clean fuels in the city. And we've cut 840,000 tonnes of CO2 from the atmosphere since 2005. That's the equivalent of 2.4 million tonnes of gold being banned. And by next year, we'll have reduced carbon emissions by 42% since 2005. We will be buying green energy. We've converted our street lamps and vehicles to electricity. We've installed 27,000 LED lights, streetlights, with a programme only halfway through. We've invested in solar panels in major venues such as the Arena and Convention Centre in Liverpool, banning taxis from retrofitting higher polluting engines. Our new bus hub in the city centre will remove 900,000 dead kilometres and 2,000 tonnes of carbon dioxide every single year by providing a layover facility. Last week I announced in total £4 billion for new cycling lanes, so that we can get our grandchildren, our children, and our adults to cycle safely around the city. Our connectivity scheme will reduce traffic congestion in the most polluted areas like the Stran, Islington, Bowland Park, Road by the Rockers. And through our monitoring for child scheme, our children have planted 12,000 trees in the past two years, and are on course to plant 4,000 trees more next year. And I can also announce tonight that the city is starting detailed work on how we can take heat from the River Mersey and our dock system in our waters to directly heat buildings on the waterfront, including our own Dunard Building, saving up to 10,000 tonnes of CO2 a year, and also saving us massive amounts of money. That's innovation, that's thinking differently, but I know that we haven't always got it right, and we need to do so much more. But let's be clear again, and it's important that we recognise this as we move forward, that we can't do it alone. We do need central governments, we do need the combined authority and the other authorities working together. Because air quality and air pollution, there were no borders, they couldn't stop at one particular border, they pollute us all. So it's important Mersey travel to put electric and hybrid buses on the most congested routes, and in fact, paying for pushing on that is absolutely essential. But also, what we do with the Mersey itself, and whether it's a biode, or whether it's tidal energy systems, we need to really push and drive on that to make sure it happens. We're probably one of the many, we're probably one of the few cities that has the opportunity to really make use of a tidal system that in spring tides has an 11% drop. So working with our partners also to reduce waste, we spend £25 million a year just treating waste, just treating it, so that we can then get rid of it. £25 million, just taking what we could do if we saved 50% of the waste that we actually have for trees, just take what we could do with that money. And then, of course, critically, we need to make sure that the industries of the future, for example, in the science sector, are sustainable, cleaner, and greener, and working alongside us to make sure that they deliver on those targets that we set them and which we will set them. So we're also setting up the Select Committee to scrutinise and help drive that way. So it's important for us to actually set ambitious targets for the city. It's important that we do, and we wouldn't shift away from setting targets, ambitious targets. And we can look at what others have done, and we can compare ourselves to what others have done in terms of their targets. I'm happy that we've gone for 2030, because we should have ambition to achieve that. We should set a target that is demanding, but I believe with our own work together, we can achieve that. But if we are really to make a difference, then we also do need government to step up and give us the devolution of powers and resources from Whitehall to local leaders. We have got to be able to use building control to make sure that we are building those houses. We are determined to push governments to give us the powers to make sure that builders do build sustainable houses for the future. So after 10 years, we're not going in and wrestling with them, that build- that build sustainable for the future with triple glazing, with photovoltaic roofs or whatever else we need to do in terms of installation to save on energy. And it's obscene and apparently mentioned on many, many occasions that when we retrofit properties or when we modernise properties with triple glazing or photovoltaic roofs, governments slap on a 70% VNT. What type of system is that that we punish people for wanting to actually reduce emissions? So we've got to force government, we've got to push and demand that government, now that they've adopted the climate change emergency, help us to achieve the goals and the targets that we set. We also need a clean era, a scratchet scheme for the most polluted vehicles and appropriate funds to help us tackle the air quality problems that we have. So we're looking at supporting our taxi fleet to move from diesels to electric. We're looking at, instead of them going to pay APR on a loan that they get to pay £65,000 for a vehicle of 8, 9, 10%, we're looking to support them at a reduced rate at an APR through the public sector, where it's lower board of between 2 and 1.5%. So it saves their money and incentivises them to actually make that change. And we'll be lobbying hard through the UK 100 initiative to demand that Whitehall implement the changes that provide the money that we desperately need if we are to do the things that we need to do and we need to act now. So as hard as it is in politics, we've set aside, I believe, our differences to work together on this particular issue. It is not one party's area. It is all of every single party, every single councillor, every single person in our city to make that change. Because everyone here in the chamber, whatever political party you belong to, can and should commit to making a real difference. And so my message is clear tonight and it's to note across the city and it's to every single person who's listening to the debate or who will read about it tomorrow. If our city goes together, stands together on this particular issue, we can not only build a sustainable future for our children, but we can start doing it now if we work together. Let's hold it and let's make that difference.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Can I now invite councillor Richard Kemp, CDE, to speak, please?
Well, this is often happened. Although we perhaps don't admit it too much, it's a pleasure to follow and support the elected mayor in what he said today. I particularly like to start by saying how much I welcome this style of council meeting. Too often, we've met here as a council, argued fearlessly about 5% of the motions and then you never supported them at the end of the day. This seems to me to be much more adult politics, which enables us perhaps to share some differences, but largely meaningful and constructive debates about, in this case, one of the most important issues which faces today. Like the noble lord who spoke before, I'm not doing this for me. I will be well opportunely before full effects of climate change start. It's quite possible that my children will also survive the big changes. But today, I have three of my grandchildren in my house. They're nine, five and three. And it's for them that I want to take action now and perhaps for their children as well. The other thing I want to say before we get into the meat of the argument is that I'm very pleased that we resisted the calls to declare a climate change emergency earlier than we have done today. I was up there at the Government's Association a week before last and I asked a lot of the councillors in the session about it. What have you done since you declared the climate change emergency? And the answer in those cases, well, what are we supposed to do? I don't think it would have been right for us simply to pass a motion and run a flag, a flag up the town hall or a flagpole. I think it was right to wait until we could have the considered debate with some of the statistics sorted out and some of the ways forward sorted out. And I particularly welcome the fact that today the mayor has appointed a cabinet member for climate change solely to do the decision. I actually welcome the fact it's the person that it is and that there will be a select committee in which all parties will share, that will take this idea forward. But I don't want this council to adopt any environmental policies today or for that matter, any other day. I want this council to consider the environment and climate change effects in every single thing that it does. As I've challenged my colleagues who speak for us on the various committees, all of them have been able to say how they think their select committee, the area which they're looking at, could be doing things. Some of those will be brought forward to the select, the new select committee, but some of those should be part of the work programmes of every select committee. As we go forward, we will not agree on everything. And that's fine. Today, we're agreeing the big proposition, the major direction and the principles. We will pass on this agreement all the way. But those shouldn't be about the why. They shouldn't be about the need. But they may be because at some stages we have a genuine difference of opinion about how to do this. And provided we conduct the debate on the differences in the right way, then perhaps those differences will only at that stage in a positive way contribute to the big picture that we so desperately need. So clearly, this council needs to do some big things. The mayor has already mentioned housing and we will be having our next extraordinary議題 council meeting on that subject in September. Transport is a key item. And employment is a key item as well because there are those who say doing these things will put people out of jobs. I don't actually believe that climate change is a job loser. I believe that climate change is a job creator. A creator of jobs in the sort of industries, manufacturing and otherwise, which will actually produce some of the innovations. It would be better for Liverpool to start on that by harnessing the power, the knowledge and the intellect of our three universities. So Liverpool needs some big strategies, but those strategies will be composed of lots of small things. Interesting report, something you were seeing in The Guardian about how in another country, all bus shelters have things growing on them. We've got something like 700 bus shelters in Liverpool. Just imagine if we were doing that, the change that that would make to the environment. We need to plant more trees on top of the half million we've already planted. We need to put solar panels on every building. And I think that's going to be difficult. Again, we can show the example. Outside the parapet, outside the office of opposition councillors, there's an enclosed area with a parapet behind it which traps the sun, which should have solar panels on them. Wouldn't affect the listed building. But we actually now have a very small number of buildings. We should be challenging every public sector building owner in this city to also put solar panels and other either energy-saving or energy-producing products on the buildings. And we should be saying exactly the same to the private sector as well. But whether it's big issues or small ones, this cannot be our fight alone. Lord Devon's made it quite clear that also the government must do things. But I would say that there's someone even more important than that. Every single one of us in this council chamber must work with our 480,000 fellow residents to think through what we do in a substantially different way. Every resident, every school, every college, every business, every organisation needs to think of the effect of what they do on our environment and also on our health because the two things are inextrudably linked. Just imagine what would happen if everyone who owned a Chelsea tractor decided to buy a small car? Just think of the effect of every car owner if they reduced the number of journeys they did by 10% by walking to some places or catching the bus? Just think of the effect of that alone. Just think of what would happen if we bought things differently. Alarming reports now of shops where you buy stuff that you're only going to use three or four times. You buy them for the fibre and you know they're going to disintegrate. And that's clogging up our bins and we're taking it to tips because we can't recycle it. Just imagine if we thought, got people to think about how they buy things. Products like that and products, for example, like food, challenging the air miles, the room miles that brings food to us from all over the world, which could be grown locally or could be brought to us in a different form. And how we recycle. Too many people just don't recycle at all. For others, it is quite complicated. I sometimes sit there and think, which bin should this go in? So sometimes we need to help fools like me who like to do their bit but actually are a bit unsure about it. So that's a job for the council. But I don't see any of this as a threat. I see it all as an opportunity. Don't we all want to live in a healthier city? Don't we all want a city to live in that's more attractive, that's green and pleasant and safe? Don't we all want to create new jobs in the right industries? Don't we all want more visitors who come here using ecologically sound routes? Who come here because we have become a beacon of hope, as a green city, not only in this country, not only in Europe, but perhaps in the world? All these are prizes within our grasp providing we work together to do it. So we must now start a conversation with our residents, our businesses, our organisations to change our culture. We as a council must take the lead in that and show that we walk the walk as well as talking at all. And if we do that, Liverpool will not be an all-so-round. We will not become a Johnnie Gollan lately. But together, everyone in this council chamber can make sure that Liverpool is top of the list for councils taking this climate change problem seriously and doing something about it. My lord, it's a pleasure to settle down.
Thank you, councillor Kemp. Can I now invite councillor Crohn to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Firstly, can I thank the speakers, all the speakers from before, but particularly the speakers from the Youth Strife for Climate because it's thank you groups like yourselves and Extinction Rebellion, as well as all the reports coming from the UN that in the last few months that have really pushed the issue of climate emergency up the political agenda. So thank you for that. And climate emergency is exactly what we're facing. We now know that failing to keep global warming down below 1.5 degrees and even just allowing...